Okay, I'm calling to order, 6:30, I'm calling to order the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council. Regular meeting. And we'll have a roll call, please.
Counselor Safavi?
Here.
Counselor Wheel?
Glad to be here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Gallagher?
Here.
Counselor Sheldon is absent, Counselor Blum?
We can all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, audience participation, I'm thinking it's pretty light tonight. Thank you Laura, okay, we have no one signing up and we have no one from the boards, commissions, or committees. So consent agenda item actually has 6A, B, and C, is there any desire to remove anything?
No.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So consent agenda items 6A, B, and C are all approved. 8A, unfinished business, council bill five, series 2020, amending section 165120 to adopt the federal emergency management agency revised flood insurance study and flood insurance rate maps for Arapahoe County. This will be our city manager, Mr. Kramer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is the second reading on an item to update the referenced FEMA maps for those portions of Arapahoe County that cover Cherry Hills Village. The maps were contained in the packet and this passed on first reading and had a positive recommendation from P&amp;Z. Staff is available to answer any questions you might have.
Counselor Blum?
No.
No.
Counselor Brown? Counselor Wheel, any questions?
No.
Counselor Safavi?
No questions, thank you.
Without any questions then, is the...
I move to approve council bill five, series 2020, amending section 16-5-120 of the municipal code to adopt the federal emergency management agency's revised flood insurance study and flood insurance rate map for Arapahoe County and its incorporated areas on second and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, we'll need a roll call.
Counselor Safavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Here.
Yes.
Thank you all, passes unanimously, next, item 8B, which is council bill six, series 2020, authorizing supplemental appropriation in the general fund for fiscal year 2020, this is on second and final reading, and Jessica.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council, before you tonight for consideration is council bill six, series 2020, authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the general fund for fiscal year 2020 on second and final reading. The supplemental appropriation is for the purpose for accounting for the revenue and expenditures related to the CARES Act IGA with Arapahoe County. There have been no changes to the council bill since the first reading on July 21st and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Just a quick question, has there been more requests, have we asked for more reimbursements since this time?
The next reimbursement request we can submit is next week, August 10th, so we will be submitting one. We did ask for preapproval for the Villager ad to run in there and we were approved for our CARES ad to run in the Villager, so we'll be running that twice, we'll include that in any submittals that we have upcoming, but yes, we can submit by August 10th.
Thank you.
Have we had any inquiries from home-based businesses?
Not from home-based businesses yet, no.
You have questions?
I move to approve council bill six, series 2020, authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the general fund for fiscal year 2020 on second and final reading.
Second.
Motion and second, we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
Counselor Safavi?
Yes.
All right, that takes care of unfinished business and there's no new business listed, so we'll move on to reports. I briefly have a report about a few things, today there was a meeting with the tri-county health department and a COVID call and just to report that things are better and actually looking pretty good as far as hospitalizations and other rates. Apparently they do a survey of mask usage and that's way up since the governor issued the order, so they have watchers outside of Costco and Walgreens and stuff and apparently the use is very high and that appears to be helping and I think that's all very good news for us and for our area. There'll be a Metro Mayor's Caucus meeting tomorrow, I'll attend that, it's all by Zoom, of course. On 8/6 there's an executive committee meeting for the Mariposa County Transportation Forum, which I buy Zoom and I think Counselor Gallagher will be there. I'll have a regular lunch meeting on this, next week with Mayors Olson, Valdez, Lance, and Pico and Byder, Flur. And see, Hamden Tunnel, I think we talked about that, the last piece will be placed this weekend. Also had discussions again with ex-council member Griffin, who's working on it, has been making progress on a police foundation and working on that and so that will be a private foundation, of course, and he's pulling together some of the documents and getting that done. And I wanted to give the staff kudos for their annual report draft and I was the last one, I guess, to be submitting my piece of it, but it looked good, so thanks for all the work you did on that. All right, other reports, members of council.
Just a quick report, we're gonna work, Randy and I decided to work with the staff, with both Chris and Jay, on trying to see what we can do to entice better cell coverage. I think, Mayor, you're gonna give us some more information from what you've got and we'll set up some meetings probably in the next few weeks to try and see where we go on that, Jay's already done some preliminary research and I think it's something that maybe we can give as a gift to the city if we can ever figure out how to do it, so we'll be working on that.
So I had an inquiry from someone in my district through an email this week and it had to do with asking the question whether or not we should livestream our study sessions and it was a specific inquiry into the guest houses and he said, "Oh, it would have been really nice to be able to see that" and I don't know where, you know, what's the thought on... We don't now, we don't have notes, or we don't have minutes, is that something that for transparency that we want to consider? You know, I might have to do some research in terms of what the cost would be, but I'd love to hear what the council has to say.
Lauren, do you have any history of that, of the recording, I guess we've never recorded study sessions, is that our history?
No, it's not required to have minutes or recordings of study sessions, so we don't. I think some of the thought in the past is that that helps council to maybe have their discussions be a little more informal and free during study sessions, but there's no reason why we couldn't stream them, I don't think.
Well, if I could add to that, the concept of doing a study session before every meeting was my idea several years ago and I did think that, you know, a lot of other cities that I attended their meetings did do it that way and I felt like they were able to have a more robust discussion, I thought that might be something we were interested in. So I suggested it and the council at the time agreed and we started doing it, but I'll admit that even about two or three meetings into that, I brought up that I actually didn't think it was such a great idea anymore for that exact reason. I felt like when we have discussion about things, you know, things tend to be kind of cyclical, when they come back around it'd be nice to know what points were brought up, what, you know, maybe there are things that we're not thinking of at the time that were brought up during a previous discussion, but rather than going to recording study sessions, what I would say is if we feel there is a substantive discussion that we just have it during our, go back to having it during our council meetings. And I guess, you know, particularly as it relates to the guardhouses, that was just a discussion to determine if we even wanted to move forward with it. There will be many, move forward with even researching it, right, I mean, it wasn't even... And so there will be many on-the-record substantive discussions that people, you know, at public meetings that people will be invited to attend and will be able to watch the livestream or see it recorded. So I don't feel like in that particular case any real opportunity was lost, but I do think, you know, perhaps we don't need a study session at every meeting and we just go back to having our discussions in our council meetings, that is after all why we meet, if it's just to come and vote on things, you know, there doesn't seem to be a lot of point to that, so.
Counselor Wheel?
Well, I think that there are, it's one of these things that I sort of view as not all or nothing. There are times when the topics are complicated or there's a lot of background, you know, and kind of having a chance to come down the learning curve and understand some of that in a relaxed setting, I think is better use of our constituents' time than, you know, listening, than having them listen to me be educated or something along those lines, but I, so I think there can be agendas and there can be agenda items where a study session is really beneficial, but I think to institutionalize it before every meeting, if we have light agendas, we don't have a lot to study, so it's not a great use of our time. I would encourage that we continue doing them, but, and I think that there's never been an attempt to obscure anything from the public and if there are ways we can make the topics a little more visible that help people understand, people, you know, know what we're talking about and if they want to participate, great, you know, I could be in favor of that, for sure. But I wouldn't knock the study sessions out, I don't know that we have to go to the lengths of streaming. I don't even know, like, when we have a city council meeting, do we have any information about how many people are actually on or watching?
Our YouTube channel does track the number of people that log into the video and that has gone up since COVID-19, for sure, those numbers have increased, I don't think we can tell on our website how many people watch it through there, so I'm not sure if the YouTube numbers are count both or just through YouTube, I'm not exactly sure how that works, but I can find out more information.
Yeah, it would be something good to know, just so, because we may be solving a non-problem, you know, nobody watches them, so if we televise them, we're really not improving communication, but, well, yeah, that's all I have.
Counselor Safavi?
I think Randy summarized that very nicely, you know, for me, I find the study sessions very helpful, very useful. We all come back, you know, come with different level of knowledge regarding to each one of these topics, the history behind it and so as far as, you know, do you want to broadcast or not broadcast it, I don't have a feeling one way or another, we're fine, you know, we're gonna be... I like to be transparent and open and if the public wants to see it, I have no problem, but I like to keep it because, again, these debates or discussions, I think they're very helpful.
Let me ask Mike, the people that asked you, would they be willing to come to the session or they just would rather view it on a...
You know, it's a good question, because I don't know if it, I'm assuming it was COVID-driven, that they didn't want to show up here.
Because the question is if they want to participate, they should be here.
For this person, it was informational purposes, unlike Linda, who came in.
Right, and that was, I do feel pretty strongly that if we're discussing city business, we ought to be as open as we can, particularly in COVID, you know, if we have the ability now to tape this or broadcast it, to put it on YouTube so people can come and look at it, we ought to, if we're talking about city business, even if we're not taking action on it, I understand the rationale is we don't, we can't take any action in a study session, but still, I think that discussion that we had of the accessory structures was really important and it would have been really good to have it on YouTube so people could have, you know, heard the comments and heard the discussion of council. So I just think for transparency, in these COVID times, we can do it, it seems like an easy way, we could either do it with a study session begin or, as Counselor Brown said, we could lower it back into the agenda and have it not as a, just as an item that is, we won't take action on, but we're just gonna put discussion item in the agenda and then we wouldn't have a break between the study session. I mean, there are other things we can talk about, maybe we should, maybe the city manager and the clerk can think of something and come up with, when coming up with the numbers for YouTube, we might think of some options for council. But I like the idea of, if we're gonna talk about city business, we ought to be transparent and not put it on, because it wouldn't cost us anything more to have it put on YouTube and then everybody could hear what we're saying about the city, so.
So what I'm hearing, and not that anybody's asking, but I will offer to you, I do think there are some advantages to study sessions that debate in a regular meeting that it doesn't provide, just through its informality and the ability to have more of a dialogue. I also think it provides staff a good benefit in that we can sometimes bring ideas as a, you know, without them being fully baked and, you know, contacting every jurisdiction in the metro area. We can check your temperature and see if this is something that you think is a good idea and that way we're making good use of our time and not, you know, going so far with something. So I certainly would recommend to you that we keep study sessions. With that said, I do think, what I'm hearing is, I think we should do a little bit of research to find out what this would mean. I can see where it wouldn't be a cost increase, let us verify that and see, we probably just need to reach out to our contractor and see how that might work, that seems like the, sort of a perfect, happy medium. I came from a jurisdiction that videoed all of their study sessions, frankly, staff and the council members used it more than the public because, you know, you could go back and, now, what did, what did we say, you know, and it was, and it wasn't necessarily so folks could point fingers, it literally just was, well, that was nine months ago, I really just don't remember. So I think there might be benefit from videotaping them, so let us do a little research and we'll bring you back some details.
Thank you very much, that sounds great. Any other comments from council? Nope? We're still on city manager.
You're, okay, I just wanted a brief update that it does, I do believe that Cherry Creek Schools potentially will be starting, that Cherry Hills Village Elementary in particular will be starting five days a week, full days, kind of a regular schedule, but the busing situation is gonna be very different and so I think we should be prepared as a city for a dramatic increase in the number of people driving their children to school and that would start the week, it's gonna ramp, start a little bit the week of the 17th and then it's gonna be in full force the week of the 24th, so just a heads up to our police and whatever, you know, we do to, that traffic is, it's bad already and it's gonna get, I think, a lot, lot worse.
Counselor Wheel?
Everything pretty quiet on the Dr. Cog front, meetings, work session canceled, as well as performance and engagement. The, there is one item that came up in Cherry Hills Farm and since you all have been involved in the run-up to this, there apparently appear to be some problems with the construction of, in Cherry Hills Farm, the construction of the comfort station in the location in which it was originally planned. Sewer line levels are different and so lift pumps and pipes and insulation and all kinds of other stuff, or elevate the building, all of which was gonna run the cost up considerably. So the, this is a good news story, actually, because the...
I'm excited to hear how it gets there.
Yeah, yeah. What it looks like is because the grade is uphill as you enter and approach the sewer line, the plan is now to move on the other side of the wall, they're looking at some different sites and coming up with some sketches. So it'll be a request for a different location for the revocable license, but I think it gets it invisible, more or less, from university, which I think is something that was, you know, a concern in the prior discussions, so I think that's an improvement. And that's...
Quick question, is that still city property, they would still need an easement from us for that?
Yeah, I believe so, where they're looking at, so that, and they're planning on that. So, but that should work out well and they are conscious of aesthetics, curbing, draining, all of that and kind of working on developing that solution, that's all I have.
Counselor Safavi?
No report other than I want to make a couple acknowledgements, and one is, I want to thank our police for doing a great job blocking the road on Hamden over the weekend and nothing crazy that I saw and it seems like there was no report of any issues or problems as far as I know, so thank you for doing a great job with that. And then also want to thank our citizen for, you know, the, again, following the social distancing and keeping the mask on and I think in general, as I've been walking around, driving around, I see people, you know, again, Cherry Hills Village, I think the community as a general, I've been impressed with how closely they're following that, so thank you and keep it up, that's all.
All right, city manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening, I am very happy to give you my inaugural city manager report. Lucky for everyone involved, it is extremely short, I really just, I want to say thank you to staff and to council for, you know, ramping up, I'm now fully immersed in the duties and, you know, the only other specific items I had for council as far as an update, I was able to attend the technical advisory team meeting for the I-25 Bellevue Station last week. The consultants provided additional data related to pedestrian, bus, and bicycle movements, primarily for the benefit of Denver and their team. Denver didn't really provide any feedback in the meeting about whether or not that sufficed, so they also discussed the opportunity for additional public outreach, even though we're in sort of a lockdown mode, so they are proposing to go to a new webinar-based outreach. And I echoed Jim's statements throughout this whole process and I told him that, you know, previously when it was in person, he had banged the drum that we needed a Cherry Hills Village public outreach meeting and since we're not doing them in person, I'm still requesting a virtual one that's geared towards and has topics that would be important to Cherry Hills residents. We'll see if that stays on their radar or not, but so far, so good, so that's the only report I have and I don't know if the directors have any issues or reports.
I have just a couple of things with, thank you for the compliment with regard to the traffic closure. All good plans need a good change and I think when they first started blocking the streets last Saturday, they had some issues of letting traffic go a little bit too far on Hamden, but they corrected that and then I had extra staff working over the weekend to help with that and then different issues that might come up in the village. I think we got all of those solved, we kept in good contact with the Devonshire group and that's always helpful and we'll be doing the same this weekend. And then the second item I had, Officer Corey Sack underwent another surgery last week for his leg. The doc went in and took out a bunch of hardware that was bothering Corey, some broken parts and this and that, but he's doing real well and he's recouping at home and coming up here will be the two-year mark for that. So it goes away in some aspects, it doesn't go away in some others, so just keep him in your thoughts if you would and that's it for me, thank you.
Staff is working on the 2021 proposed budget, so we are in the preliminary stages of doing that and we'll be reaching out to our departmental liaisons as soon as we have the budget finished for the department and then Al, I'll reach out to you once we have the entire budget complete to, for your review before we present it in draft form on September 15th. before we present it in draft form on September 15th.
Jay, could you refresh my memory about the timeline for the park here? And it's looking pretty good, so, but I don't remember when it's... Oh, yep. Hi, I can't even see you over there.
I'm hiding down here. We expect to be wrapping up with the contractor within the next few weeks and hopefully doing our final walk within the next few weeks. So I'll be working with PTRC to talk about a possible scaled-back ribbon cutting and celebration before a council meeting. So I'll be able to bring you an update at the next council meeting about that.
City attorney?
That's the end of our agenda. It's a pleasure of counseling.
I move that we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. We'll see you next time.